To the now session.
Father, we thank you for the day that you blessed us with. We thank you for the opportunity to come here and meet and take care of the county's business. Father, I ask that you will guide each person here that makes decisions, or that their decisions will be made and glorified here. We thank you again for your blessings and be with us through this Christmas season. Bless those who cannot be with us, our families, those in the military, and all the active things and do the same thing.
Allegiance, stood a flag of the United States of America, true republic, which is ours, one nation, under God, invisible, ever being, just as for all.
First of all, we would like to thank everybody for coming out to today's meeting. And before we get started with our meeting, I have a plaque that I want to present. And I want to ask Ms. Diana and Mr. Mayo, could they come to the front of the podium?
What do you want us to do?
Coach Lamb, put it down. I want to present this plaque to you guys. In appreciation of your dedication of all you 10 and support of the Dixie Youth Baseball and Junior Rafferty Football League, we thank you for your contribution to the youth of Gulf County. I want to say a prayer, because I was there with you guys. Four years of Dixie Youth Baseball, many years of coaching football, now have touched a bunch of young people in Gulf County. We just want to say you guys, thank you.
And we just want to say thank you for the opportunity we had to work with the children here in Gulf County. It has been a pleasure beyond words.
Even more than that, it's been a joy to live here. We moved here 14 years ago, knew no one. Friends of ours said, "What are you going to do? You're going to be bored. There's nothing to do there." And we said, "We're never bored." And we haven't been bored one day since we've been here. We've met wonderful people. We will be moving when we sell our homes. But we will miss each and every one of you and the experiences you've had. Thank you all.
Here we are, a motion to accept our consent agenda. We want to pull pages 49 through 51. Those pages have been pulled. Do we have anyone from the audience concerning the consent agenda? Do we have anyone from the audience concerning the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Chairman, I'd also like to pull pages 70 to 72 for discussion.
Pages 70? 72?
71 and 72. Okay, thank you.
Would you like to discuss that before?
I'd like to discuss it now, that's fine. This is the information packet policy. And I just had a few questions, and maybe your attorney can address them. One question is in section 1D on the second page. It states that the board will include, with their adoption at each regular meeting, a motion and vote to formally accept the information packet. And my question is, what is the purpose of accepting or not accepting the information packet? If the board votes to accept it or votes to not accept it, I'm not certain what the impact is of that acceptance.
Commissioner, I would say the purpose of D would be that, once staff has followed the policy, if it's adopted, that the commission's the final filter, or the screen, if you will. Commissioners determine whether or not the information packet is compliant with the policy. So the administrator's been given directions and authority under this to accept staff recommendations and inclusion in the policy. The commissioners, there is no authority. If a commissioner wants to submit something, they put something in. They have no one to receive it for. So ultimately, the policy's compliance, if they want to include it with the approval of the consent agenda each time, there is no precedent for information packet. But I would say that gives the commissioners the ability, after the staff have done, what they feel is compliant with the policy. That would be the purpose of D.
Will the information packet still be sent out, as it is now, each Thursday prior to the meeting, with the meeting agenda packet?
I would anticipate that that doesn't change. The deadlines for the Wednesday at noon the week prior would be so that it could be included with the consent and the actual regular meeting agenda.
Okay, so we're still going to send it out, but potentially, when we come into this meeting, we could have a situation where commissioners are pulling pages, as we've had in the past recently?
If that's the policy to approve, yes.
I understand with the consent agenda that we are actually passing things in the consent agenda that someone is requesting action. Everything in the consent agenda is something that someone has submitted and requested action or approval. So we do approve that, or we pull something that we may not be ready to approve, or that may need to be revised. The information packet is not typically something that's asking for action, but is strictly information, if called that. So I'm not sure that I quite understand an acceptance by the board or non-acceptance, and if pages are pulled, if they weren't accepted, they're already transmitted to the public, so they are a public record by virtue of the transmittal. So I'm not, I don't see where the vote for the board to accept or not accept the information packet really has any type of impact on the information packet. I'm not quite understanding why we would be voting on accepting an information packet when it's just information. The other issue that I have is, under the purpose, towards the end of that paragraph on the first page of purpose, it says that the information packet that accompanies the biweekly meeting agendas shall supplement the agenda for the commissioners and/or staff exclusively for distributing additional information or correspondence to one another for purposes of that meeting. Is exclusively modifying commissioners and/or staff, or exclusively for distributing additional information?
Exclusively for distributing information.
Okay. So we possibly add "public" to, for the commissioners, staff, and information for the public? To me, the information packet is also something that provides information to the public. Now, if this board doesn't want to provide information to the public through the information packet, that's a different story. But I was under the impression, when I came on the board, that the information packet was strictly a tool of communication between not only the board and staff, but also the public. But I just think that we need to be clear about that. I'm not quite certain the purpose of this policy.
And Commissioner, whatever you, as the Commissioner, deem appropriate, I would say that the purpose in that last sentence would be for the commissioners, for the purpose of doing the county's business, would be the ultimate say of what goes into the information packet, and Mr. Butler. The public submits correspondence and information every day to Ms. Norris's office. So that is public record. Nothing changes that under statute. The purposes of this meeting and the business that's conducted, if a commissioner instructs the staff to include that correspondence, that public record, they'll submit it through the commission's office. Short of that, there is no policy in place right now, whether it be 100 pages or one page. What's to distinguish between the public submitting information? Who makes that final determination? The final determination of this purpose and this policy is the five commissioners make the decision. If it affects their district, it affects the agenda, it affects an information purpose they want to speak about at a meeting, they will include it. Any one of you five will include it. Short of that, there's no other ability to get something in the information packet for today's meeting.
Okay. And my understanding, in the past year, has been that if correspondence comes into the county that's addressed to the board, or addressed to the chairman, that it would typically be placed in the information packet? That kind of how we have been functioning in the last year? Not to a specific commissioner, but to the board, or to the chairman as the chairman? Will we continue to function that way, to share that information with the public when correspondence comes in and address that way?
Yeah, I was, there's a couple of concerns that you mentioned. I don't think that we can just open up the information pack for anybody in the public just to put something in the information pack. I think there has to be some control. That's why I supported, let's at least start with a policy, get this policy going. It needs adjustments later on, let's take a look at adjustments. But I think it's a good first step to have a policy in place that all of us know what the policy is for the information pack. But I don't think that we need to open that up for the public to determine what goes to the information pack. We might have 300 pages in the information pack, and some of it not relevant. So I think that, you know, the steps that we've taken, you know, the staff puts it in there, and then that's reviewed by this board and approved by this board. I think it's a good first step, if we see later on that we need to make some adjustments on that. I don't think anybody's opposed to making any adjustments.
And the public can still write to the chairman or the board and communicate in that fashion. And I had some calls from the public that were concerned that we would stop distributing the information packet. So I wanted to be certain of that. So I guess my only outstanding concern would be that we are voting to formally accept the information packet. I don't know that that really has any real function.
Commissioner, if I can suggest to the board, possibly find another word for formal acceptance, to deem it compliant, and you can include it with your consent agenda each time as part of your policy. When you vote to consent agenda, through and approve it, you accept the information packet as compliant with the policy. There's no formal action to accept what's written in the information packet as a formal action of the board. I understand your point there, simply to deem it compliant with the county policy. And the other thing I wanted to add, just for the public, not so much for the commission, anything that's submitted to the county is public record, and is always accessible through our county records policy that we adopted two years ago. There's a form in Ms. Norris's office, and you can submit correspondence or fill out the form. And anything submitted to an individual commissioner or all the commissioners is always available in Ms. Norris's office. So I just want to remind the public, this policy doesn't change that at all, and I think subsection three speaks to that.
So are you proposing a change in the language in section D?
I can reword that to vote to formally, defy, or deem the information packet compliant with the county policy. And if you will have any objection, we can conclude that with the consent agenda vote during each meeting.
I think we had a motion. I'll second it with that change in language.
What happens if it is not compliant, and we're here in the meeting, and we say it's not compliant?
Then I would say, under A, a commissioner didn't follow the policy and submit the information appropriately, and the commission needs to remove it until it is compliant. Or B, the administrator didn't follow the policy and submit the staffs in the proper form.
But it has already been disseminated, and it's only an information packet.
Correct.
So I still believe that it's an exercise in futility, but if this board wants, I don't see where there's any real harm. So if this board wants to take on that action, then...
And I think we need a policy in place, and this is a start. If we see a problem, we can always change it.
I get a motion to pass it, gentlemen.
With that amendment, Collins?
That amendment.
Yeah, I'll second it.
I got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Or Mr. McDaniel. I'll second him.
Okay, motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed?
If...
Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Did we want to go ahead and address the other one that we pulled, and who didn't get in there?
Mr. Attorney, before I, on that motion, should I went to the...
Please, if you would.
Do we have anything from the audience? Do we have anything from the audience? We got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, we got a second by Mr. Yeager. Have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Chairman, while we're here and working on this, may we discuss the pages 49 through 51 as well?
Okay.
Here we pull.
We pulled that. It was supposed to be an agenda item for discussion by the board. It is only our annual representation on the Appalachian Regional Planning Council Board. Ms. Bryan, Tony Justice, and Mr. Hammond are on that board for 2013, and ARPC is asking for 2014 appointments. And we wanted to know, do you want to keep the current members that you have, or change the county membership?
Mrs. Bryan, the board?
I don't want it.
I am willing to serve again, if the board so desires.
But Ms. Bryan, do you have any objection from the board?
Oh, the only, Mr. Chairman, I'm in order. I was looking over, apparently they meet quarterly, and we have a representative for the county, a representative, I guess, for the city municipalities, and then appointee by the governor Scott. And we have Ms. Bryan, Commissioner Bryan, Tony Justice, who's a city commissioner, and Weewahichka, and Mr. Hammond, who is the governor's appointee. But of the quarterly meetings, Mr. Justice only made one, Mr. Bryan two, and Commissioner Hammond made three out of the four. This is very important, Appalachian Regional Planning Board is. Ms. Bryan would like to sit on it again. I surely have no objection. My wagon's pretty much loaded.
And Commissioner McDaniel, I just want to clarify that the January meeting was, I was appointed right at the time of the January meeting, and had a court date on that date, so I couldn't make the first meeting.
I'm just, that's all.
It was about a week after I got appointed.
Okay. That's great. But if you, it's time on me. Time on me, I have enough.
The names is on here now, we're going...
Yeah, that's good for me. And I don't know, it says an alternate. I don't think we've ever appointed an alternate, have we? I don't see any use of that. So move, Mr. Chair, for those.
A motion by Mr. Yeager?
I'll second Mr. Yeager's motion.
Second by Commissioner Mike Daniels. Do we have any opposed? Do I have anyone from the audience? Do we have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries forward.
One question now, will this be back into consent, or will this be...
With this approval, I'll go ahead and send them the information and let them know the appointment stays the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have a presentation by Ms. Caitlin O'Connell from Florida...
Well, while we're waiting, thank you guys for having me today. I really appreciate the invitation to come out and present to you guys a little bit about black bears. I know you guys are having some problems, and I want you guys to know that FWC is taking those problems seriously, and we're going to try and work together to reduce your human bear interactions as best as we can. I'm Caitlin O'Connell. I'm the stakeholder coordinator for the bear management program. Basically, that means is that I do this. I get to go out to the counties, meet your county officials, city officials, work with them on, you know, the waste management contract, waste service provider contracts. And I train law enforcement for reverse conditioning and bear response training, and I'm in charge of the bear management units that we're starting throughout the state. Right now, we're starting with the West Panhandle, but the East Panhandle Bear Management Unit is going to start in the spring. So if anybody's interested in serving on a stakeholder group for that, please see me. Stakeholder group basically would give us input into how we manage the bears and what you guys want to see done locally.
You can make a full screen with the clicker.
Okay. If you wanted to pop two. If you press F5, it should pop up. There we go. All right, here we go. All right, so black bears in Gulf County. Everybody seen a black bear that's here today? Yeah? All right, good. All right, so in the 1950s, we estimated the bear population to be about 500, and that continued to decline into the 70s when we realized that the bear species was on the brink of extinction. We listed it as a state threatened species. Then in 1994, all the bear hunting season was closed. The last county was Liberty County to continue bear hunting. And then in 2012, we were actually able to delist the species. And we did have, sometimes people have a hard time when we actually delist something because they're afraid it's not going to be protected anymore. But the point of being on a state listed species, as a state listed species or federally listed species, is to get off the list. We want the population to be viable, and we want it to get off the list. That means that we're doing our jobs right. Now, this doesn't mean that we're just like, okay, we're done. Bear population's where we want it to be. Here you go. We're going to continue to, we know that the problems are escalating, and they're going to continue to rise as the population continues to increase. So we do want to make sure that we are managing the population as best as we can. So the statewide population estimate in 2002 was 3,000 bears. That is 11 years old, which means that the population is probably more than 3,000 at this point. We are going to have a new population estimate starting in 2014, so this summer. We're going to start in the Okala National Forest, and then in 2015, we'll be in the Appalachian Coal National Forest and the Eglin Air Force Base area. So your population estimate will be done in 2016. So we'll be able to get a new number for you guys. So these are bad bears, and I'm sure that you guys have seen your fair share of them. We don't want this. And these pictures are really good examples of the things that bring bears into human habitats. Is garbage not being locked up, pet food being left outside, bird seed. Bears love bird seed. There's tons and tons of calories in bird seed. And also grills. The smell, I mean, it smells good to us. Can you only imagine how good it smells to a bear? Oops, sorry. So our statewide bear calls have steadily increased, and in 2012, we had a big jump. So we had over 6,000 calls, and 2013 is going to be even more than that. So what kind of calls do we get? The biggest majority of our calls are in area, in tree, in yard, so that people are just seeing the bears, and then the next is in garbage. So 74% of our calls are actually preventable through education and through securing attractives. By not having anything in your yard that the bears are attracted to, you'll reduce the chance of the bear actually wandering into your yard or getting into your garbage. So now where Gulf County falls into the Northwest region is you guys actually only have 3% of the calls. For the last 13 years, we've had over 13,000 calls in the Panhandle. Now, I'm not trying to say that you guys are any less important to us, because you're not. We, you don't want to be those counties. You don't want to be Okaloosa, you don't want to be Santa Rosa, you definitely don't want to be Franklin. And you can see that you guys are kind of on your way to that. There's steady, you guys are having a steady increase. Now, these are only calls that we're getting. It's not calls that the county gets, the city gets, sheriff's office, local TDs. So these are just calls that FWC gets. So yeah, this is, we don't want this. We want this to stop. We don't want you guys to get any more phone calls than you're already getting. So where the phone calls are occurring is Highway 98. Bears love that highway. There's some up in Weewahichka? Did I say it right? All right. And it's mostly in the unincorporated parts of those cities, so county jurisdiction. You know, we get a lot of calls saying, "You're in Port St. Joe," but you're actually on the outskirts of it, and you fall into the unincorporated part of the city. So things that we can do about it is, like I said, locking up trash cans, dumpsters, switching to steel doors instead of plastic lids, because bears can stand on the plastic and they'll rip it open. And if you do have plastic lids with a locking bar on top of it, and if you can't stand on the lid, neither can a bear, which means the bear's going to go straight into the middle of it and be able to get to the trash. And the other thing is actually locking those sliding doors. So for residential garbage, the easiest fix is, if you guys have a garage, keeping your garbage in your garage. We also have retrofits, but I've brought some pamphlets with me on the different designs that we have for actually locking the trash cans. Caddies, which we've had Eagle Scouts build for us, designed for us. And then buying new cans. These cans are $200. There's one outside that I have right now. They're very expensive, and I don't blame anybody for not wanting to buy one. I don't even pay for trash service. I'm on unincorporated part of Tallahassee. I don't pay Leon County to come get my trash. I just take it to the dump. So I'm with you guys on, like, not wanting to pay extra for them servicing, you know, bear resistant trash cans, or buying a new trash can that's bear proof. These trash cans are tested by grizzly bears out west, so our black bears definitely can't get into them. But again, they are sensitive. We do do cost sharing programs. FWC will cost share with the county. We've done it with Leon County, we've done it with Santa Rosa, Okaloosa. Croyer County, we're cost sharing them with caddies, the caddies that I showed earlier. So there is that opportunity. If you guys are interested in working with us, we can figure something out. And it's not even you guys will cost share with your waste service provider. So the county wouldn't even be putting out the bill. It would be whenever you guys renew your waste contract, that we can work that wording into the contract so that they provide, or they service, either retrofits or bear proof cans. So just to reinforce the securing garbage works, retrofits are the ones that we lock. You've already put it on existing trash cans. They reduced from 71% to 32% after we did a neighborhood. Bear proof trash cans, the ones that are actually commercially produced to be bear resistant, 97% to 5%. So those are really big drops. There's also in Hobart Field, they have a lot of turnover with their employees, and they also have a commander in chief that can tell them exactly what to do. The counties don't exactly have that power. But they put bear proof trash cans and dumpsters everywhere on base. Everybody that moves onto base has to go through an educational program, and all of their security forces are trained every six months in bear response. And they had a reduction in conflicts by 70%. The best thing that we can do is issue a garbage ordinance. And sometimes these are easier to do in homeowners associations, where it's smaller, on a smaller scale. But you guys are already way ahead of curve, as far as everybody else is concerned. Because you guys have this ordinance, 2005-13, when I was browsing through Gulf County, that I found that says that if you live on Highway 98, I think, Cave Sam Blas Road, County Road 30A, 30B, those are what you guys consider tourist corridors, and you can't put your trash out, your trash can out until 6:00 PM the night before pickup, and then you have to bring it back in immediately after you've been serviced. This is just, we just need to take one more step, and you guys will see a really big reduction. If you say keeping your trash can inside, or having it somehow secured so the bears can't get into it, and then putting it out at 6:00 AM, so the morning of pickup. Because bears learn what day your trash gets picked up on, and they'll hit your trash can that night. Yeah, there's a really quick learning curve. It's really difficult to keep up with them. So maybe that's something that you guys want to consider, since you've already taken that initial step to reduce the number of trash cans that are on the road during the day, on pickup days. That might be something that's easy for you guys to do. So what about FWC? I'm talking, you guys, you guys, you guys, you need to do this, you need to do that. What are we going to do? Well, first of all, we have assistance over the phone. Now, I know that's not as satisfying as somebody coming out and moving the bear from your house, but the Northwest region is the place to call. So if somebody calls the police department or the county, you can just send them to the Northwest region. You guys don't even have to deal with it. Call FWC, call FWC, call FWC. You can also add our link to the website, on the commission website. So the Gulf County website. Are you having bear problems? Click here, and it takes you to our website, and with a bunch of information on how to secure your trash and your other attractives. We do not trap and relocate. It doesn't work. You move... You move, not only do you move the problem to somebody else's backyard, but 50% of those bears are actually problem bears again, and 70% of them return or wander back, trying to go back to where their home is. And a lot of times, that means encountering growth. Not only is that dangerous for bears, but it's dangerous for people. You do not want to hit a 300 pound bear going 60 miles an hour. It's not fun. You will end up more hurt than the bear. Um, and also, there's no place to put them. People are like, why can't you put them in the woods? Why can't you put them in the woods? There's no remote area in Florida. We have 19 million people, and they're surrounding all of the bear habitat. So there's no, zero chance for a bear to be moved somewhere that they're not going to encounter a person or become a problem bear again. The other thing that we can do, like I said when I was doing my introduction, is bear response training. Law enforcement, park staff, um, waste service providers that work at the local dump, um, we teach them how to haze bears. We'll go out, we'll shoot some bears in the butt with a paintball gun or the beanbag, and you teach that bear that when there's a person around the trash can, they don't want to be there because it's going to hurt. That's another thing that you guys can do. If you see a bear in your, in your neighborhood, in your yard, yell at it. Scare the bejesus out of it. Make it so that it doesn't want to be there when you're there. That's what we want to teach the bears, that people are scary, they're bad, they're mean. We don't want anything to do with them. And I know that scaring a bear sounds crazy, but I can scare a bear off. I've scared a 400 pound bear off with a food site when I was doing my raptors research. I guarantee you that you guys can do it too, because I'm like one-fourth of that bear's size. So I'll take any questions. I don't know, like, how much time I had or if I ran over, um, but, and if you guys have more questions and you don't have time for them, I can stay and talk to you guys again.
Kayla, if the public doesn't have any questions, I got, I got one. You did your last survey in 200, what was it?
2002.
2002. A long time between surveys.
Yes, it is.
And I can tell you, the numbers are tremendously increased.
Oh, I don't doubt that for a second.
I've had them in my front yard. I live in Port St. Joe, I've had them in my front yard. I've had them in my backyard. We have a lease, somebody leased that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And all those kinds of things, but it's, it's increased to the point. But the reason that we're not at 3% reporting is because most people see them on a regular basis.
They don't call.
I didn't call anybody when I saw those.
Yeah.
You know, one of them was trying to get in the trash can, and I heard him, and the other one was just in the backyard, but, um, I think at some point, FWC is going to have to look at, at how do we maintain the numbers? And you may have to go to, like you do the gator program now that there was, if they issued some permits or whatever, but, you know, we even had, and it's, I know it's a rare case, but a lady, just last week, down in central Florida, got attacked by a black bear.
Yes, and I can address any issues that anybody has with that. I'm fully briefed on the current situation. Well, um, I, we don't know the whole story about exactly how the attack happened. We do know that the woman's still in the hospital, and that night, she was in surgery for the entire night. We have trapped, we trapped a yearling immediately that night, and that one is put into a rehab facility. He's going to be released because the bear that was described was a large bear. He's going to be released into the Ocala National Forest, I believe. Um, we've trapped a 200 pound female bear, and she was euthanized, and a 200 pound male bear that was euthanized. And that sounds harsh, um, but, like I said, there's no place that we can put a bear that it's not going to encounter a person, and we don't want to take the chance of this bear injuring somebody again. So the phrase we've been using is out of an abundance of caution. We are, any bear that fits the description, we're putting down. And that's, you know, I know that it sucks, it sucks for us because we didn't get into the business to, to put bears down for no reason, um, but...
Is there a discussion in FWC about issuing permits, limited number of permits? And I know you haven't done a count in a long time.
Well, and that's...
That's amazing to me.
Yeah.
It's been that many years that you haven't done a bear count.
Yeah.
But one of the reasons that we're seeing them, and I know we're, Florida's growing and we're expanding into their habitat and that type of thing, but one of the reasons that you see these bears in residential areas is because there's so many in the wild that they're coming somewhere else to look for food.
Yeah, we don't, um, we don't think that it's entirely, um, our urban expansion. We also think that it is bears increasing. And there is not talk right now. The hunting will happen after we have a full count of the state. And we're going every summer, and now, what you said about 2002, yeah, 11 years is a really long time since the last count. So what we have is, we have a legislative budget request that went through, that we're going to have funding to estimate the bear population every year. We have money to do something with the bear, research on the bear population every year until the legislator decides that they don't want to give us money for it anymore, and I think that that's not going to happen.
That's the only way to control a population of any animal, is have good data.
Right.
And if you don't have good data, you're just shooting in the dark and...
Yeah, and that's another reason that we want people to call FWC, because if we don't know what's going on in your area, we have no idea how to help you. I have no idea that the bear's been hitting your trash can every night for the past week. That's a problem, because as bears become more used to people and they get bolder and bolder, we have an incident like Longwood, where somebody comes up on a bear, the bear's in a bad mood, and they get attacked. And we don't want that. We don't, the, the, lower the bear's tolerance, or the higher the bear's tolerance the people get, the danger, more dangerous they become. And bears are, they're supposed to be afraid of people. They're naturally afraid of people, and we just want to reinforce that natural fear.
I got a problem in my neighborhood with a mother bear and two cubs. She was kind of, you know, kind of afraid of the mother bear with her cubs. She might think someone...
Right.
You know, it's a little foyer right there in the middle of the road over in the, uh, neighborhood. They just get right there and they lay right there in that, in the middle of that.
We definitely don't want that. If they're laying in people's yards, that's bad.
I got constituents walking out the front door, just watching them lay over there and...
Yeah, we don't want that. That's when you call us, because we'll send somebody out and we'll scare that bear. We'll shoot them, we'll, with the beanbags and the paintball, non-lethal, um, and reinforce the fear. We don't want them, especially a mother with cubs. That's a bad sign, that she's comfortable enough to lay down in front of people and just take a nap.
Yes, I mean, and, um, the garbage cans getting hit over, uh, times a week.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd say, I don't even put my garbage out no more. I put it, like you said, I put it away till that morning.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the best way, and, you know, the, it only takes one person to cause a problem, which is why this is such a hard task, is because you can tell people to put their trash cans away, and as soon as one person doesn't do it, you have a bear problem.
Let me ask you a question. Do they have any type of repeal?
UF is working on that. Um, we, they're trying to develop a scent that bears just don't like. So we've been helping, assisting them with that because they need, um, bear specimens to work with. Um, so whenever we encounter like a roadkill, or if we do have to put down a bear, we'll, donate the body to research for UF to come up with that deterrent. The other thing that I've heard is like ammonia. People have used mothballs, but in my experience, that actually doesn't work. Um, we've had a bear break into a research car that had mothballs in it, so I wouldn't recommend that. Um, baby diapers, I've heard. Yeah, just something that smells, uh, Cajun peppers or cayenne peppers, people have used that. That stuff, I would believe that cayenne peppers would work because bears have such a good sense of smell, that it would get a ball in their nose and they wouldn't want any part of it. The other thing that if you guys are nervous about walking at night, since this attack did happen, air horn, whistles, and bear spray. Sold at Bass Pro, Walmart might sell it around here. Um, you can also get it online. It shoots out a big cloud of pepper spray. Um, it's got a nine second stream, um, and you can just do it in spurts. If you do use it, make sure you know which way the wind's blowing. You don't want it coming into your face. But that's definitely something that you can use, um, if you are nervous about walking around, uh, at night, which is a, is a concern. I would, I can imagine people being nervous now after this incident happened.
Kayla, I have to play, I'm like Mr. Jaeger. When are y'all going to have a hunting season?
We, um, that is not our choice. It is going to come from our commissioners. The commissioners for the FWC, um, are, that's a top-down request.
Right, the commission that we want a bear hunt.
Yes. So we...
That's what we need to do, Captain Commission. We need to tell them we want bear, uh, be permitted, be, uh, camp.
I've talked to a couple of them, talked to Beauregard, I think it was, and then I've talked to Chuck Roberts, so, I mean, I, I'm sure they're, they're getting, uh, a lot of calls, especially from hunters, because we put out corn in Florida, and I can tell you, I've got pictures of mamas and babies, and got pictures of one standing on my winch to keep the bear away from the, the corn, and he's standing on the winch up there slapping the corn feeder. They're, the, the population has increased dramatically over the last 10 years, and that's why, if you don't have good data, if you don't, if your last count was 12 years ago, you have no clue how many bears are in that forest.
Yeah, now, bears do have a slow growth rate, so I'm going to, I am going to give you that. So, we don't think that the bear population has quadrupled, but we do know that it's definitely in, it's not 3,000 anymore. I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that.
Come to my lease, they've quadrupled in my lease.
And I like to see them. I mean, they're an animal. I love animals. I like to see them, but there's, there comes a time where you've got to somehow manage that, that population.
Yeah.
And, and, I tell you, I, I think the only way to manage it is to permit, like you do the, like, you do the gators, but you need good data.
Right, and that's, and that's why we're not even talking about it yet, because we can't. There's, you know, we can say, okay, let's hunt, let's hunt, let's hunt, but we don't know how many to set the quota at. And the last thing we want to do is set the quota way high and knock the bear population down again and not be able to hunt them. We don't want to do that. New Jersey does that. Every other year, they have a hunt, because they kill too many of them, so they can't have a hunt every year. We don't want to be New Jersey. Yeah, um, the other thing is, is that during a hunt, you kill the good bears. You kill the bears that are in the woods, that are doing the right thing, so it's not going to take away all of the nuisance problems. So we do still have to concentrate on what we do as the public and individuals to manage our bears, um, in our areas, so the neighborhoods and all of that. Did you have a question?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Very educational. Let's just take the situation here on 98. The bears will travel down to the shoreline. That's natural food they get there. Between wooded area...
And the shoreline.
Houses.
Right.
They stopped by Jerry Mason's home. He had pizza tonight. Why walk on down there when we can just stop here?
Yeah.
And so, and I live in the north end of the county. We don't have the problem. I have a female and two small ones in the back of my property there, and they are no, I own about nine head of deer, but they're no problem because I have yard dogs that can push back. But what I'm saying is, up on our end, bears normally with, with the natural food, but they're cutting the timber around here and they're destroying the bear bushes, so they're really, uh, the people cutting the timber are destroying their habitat too. Um, we're encroaching...
Right.
Then same, what's out there is getting destroyed. I came through the over street this morning and check on an issue out and...
Yeah, and that's, that's part of our...
And they're devastating it.
Yeah, um, that is part of our management plan. Um, the thing that we normally concentrate on is reducing the human, bear interactions, because that's what everybody's always concerned about. But habitat is part of our management plan. We are, that's one of the four things that we want to work on, and that is one of them, is creating more habitat for them, connecting populations, giving them travel corridors. And the one thing that I will say about timber, I don't, I don't know if they're clearcutting, but clearcutting actually helps the berries, um, but it does take away some other...
It takes a couple of three years for them to come back.
Yeah, but they come in real thick. Um, I worked on a property in Louisiana, and they clearcut, and I couldn't even walk through that stand the next year because the berries were so thick.
Kayla, the only other thing I'd say in our hush, but, uh, as Chair of the Small County Coalition, I can tell you, this is, this has been discussed in meetings of 37 counties across state, mostly rural communities, 150,000 or less, but there's problems in all those rural counties, to the point that they bring it up as an issue in our, in our meetings. If you need help, if, if FWC needs help with the legislature on trying to figure out how to get some money to, to get good data and get a bear count, then, then, you know, contact me. I can give you my contact information.
Yeah, with the trade cards.
And, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll try to help you.
Yeah, no, we appreciate any, yeah, we, and we recognize that, and that's, that's, you know, why I'm here. We don't want you guys to think that FWC is letting you out to dry. And if you do have a bear, call us, so we know how many bears you guys actually are having problems with. If there's any take-home messages, please call us and let us know. Um, you're not bothering us, please just keep, keep hammering the phone lines.
Kayla, we'd like to thank you for coming up.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it.
That's the only good, uh, we're at public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, the first public hearing today is the ordinance amending the comprehensive plan. In front of each of you, you have a proposed ordinance. And in your information, I'm sorry, in your agenda packet on page 74, you'll see the public notice that was advertised in, uh, the local general circulation on November 28th. Statute requires for this land use change to have two public hearings. In addition to that, that they be advertised at least 10 days in advance of those hearings. You can see by the date that we've had the first public hearing yesterday at 8:45 here in the commission building, and today will be the second, uh, public hearing on this comprehensive plan amendment. I want to read the ordinance, if I may. It's in front of each of you, it reads as follows, an ordinance amending the comp plan of Gulf County, Florida, and three procedures required for small-scale land use amendment pursuant to authority under Florida Statute 163 and Statute 125, specifically amending parcel ID 01045100R, one acre of land lying and being part of Section 35 Township 5 South Range 9 West Gulf County, Florida, from conservation to residential, and providing for an effective date. If the commission so chooses, I can read the whereas clauses and the actual form of action, or I can move right to the, uh, the recommendation of the ordinance.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Jaeger.
Would you, would you like to read, to read the whereas clauses or you want to go right to the...
Well, you can for the public, I guess.
It reads as follows, whereas, Section 163 provides for the authority and procedure for the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida, to amend its land use map parcels under county control and that of its citizens, and whereas Gulf County Rod and Gun Club Estates was divided by court order recorded in Circuit Court Minutes, Book 3, Page 125, with the plat of estates, quote unquote, recorded on August 21st, 1962, in Book 15, Page 293. Whereas Gulf County Comp Plan was adopted on June 12th, 1990, and the Gulf County Land Development Regulations were adopted on January 1993. And whereas the concept of growth management and land use was not fully understood nor developed by the multiple property owners affected by such categorizing and focusing on property taxes rather than the development regulations. And whereas Gulf County recognizes that numerous parcels were likely misplaced into an unfavorable and undesirable land use category when the Comp Plan was adopted. Whereas on January 24th, 2012, the Board of County Commissioners approved to waive the small-scale map amendment application fee for property owners of conservation lands that qualified for the exemption. And whereas Gulf County threw a small-scale map amendment with a fee waiver, has approved a land use change from conservation to agricultural from parcel 0068300R, through adoption of ordinance 2012-02 on March 27th, uh, March 27, 2012. And whereas the state-owned land along adjacent to the estates was designated conservation land use, and whereas the estates were also designated as conservation land use, and whereas parcels with misdesignation land use can cause undue financial hardship on said owners, and the Gulf County is committed to assisting said owners resolve the land use issues. Whereas on September 11th, 2012, the Board of County Commissioners voted to approve the PDRB recommendation that stated, "In consideration of the current development to approve the PDRB recommendation that stated, in consideration of the current development dispute and previous approvals, the PDRB recommends to the BOCC to direct any private property owner with the verified single quote lot of record, close quote, also with a deed and boundary of ten acres or less before adoption of the nineteen ninety comprehensive plan that would designate conservation to apply for a small scale land use change per Florida statute one sixty-three, to pursue reconciliation for any development grievance on that parcel. Whereas Gulf County PDRB held a public hearing on December ninth, two thousand thirteen, and voted to recommend the approval of the land use change to the Board of County Commissioners to change the land use of said parcel from conservation to residential. And whereas, in accordance with Florida statute one sixty-three and Florida statute section one twenty-five, specifically provides for the proper publication notice and announcement of Gulf County's intent in consideration of any and all land use modification requested by the parcel owner and ordinance adoption, and such notice has been properly published for general circulation in the county. And whereas, in accordance with Florida statute one sixty-three and chapter one twenty-five, notice was provided to the public of a public hearing to be held December tenth, to adopt the proposed land use changes by ordinance. Now therefore being ordained that in exercise of its authority, the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida hereby grant the land use change as follows, one, changing parcel ID zero one zero four five one zero zero R, as attached on exhibit A from conservation to residential. Section two, a certified copy of the enacting ordinance shall be filed on file with clerk of court of Gulf County, Florida. And three, the effective date of this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law, thirty-one days from the adoption, passed and duly adopted by the county, Board of County Commissioners for Gulf County, for this December tenth, two thousand thirteen. Um, and there's set up for action of the commission following public comment, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let's ask the public.
We have any comments from the public?
I'll make a motion and get a second for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Yeager. Second.
On this recommendation.
Motion by Mr. Yeager.
I'll second the discussion, but I have a question to the attorney.
Yeah, I, you know, this is almost like Cape Sandblasts and the Cobra, Don, where Cobra come in, fish and wildlife come in and, and put all that land in, in the Cobra and, wrongly doing so, but is there any way, it, how many large scale map amendments, any of these property, there's many of these properties that are going to be coming into this board for a change, is there any way we can do them, do them all at one time that, that was put in conservation that was planted before nineteen ninety? Because I know if you've got private property that's planted before nineteen ninety, how it got put in conservation? I, I, I guess we just missed it, I don't know.
I think in nineteen ninety, state forced the county commission to adopt a comprehensive plan, considered when we had to adopt a land use map, a classification map, a land use classification map, um, we took the old thirty-two inch by thirty-two inch maps that the property aphasia was developing at the time, and, and tried to get them there into the GIs world, and we were not at GI stage at the time. A lot of lots that were really residential subdivisions, a bunch, I don't know how many, but a bunch of them were placed in conservation, because they were in the area of state-owned land, which was in conservation. So they were incorrectly placed in conservation. And there's more, there's going to be more. You limit how many acres per year you can change under a small scale map amendment. So what the board did, at least a couple of land use changes ago, when you went from conservation to residential, the board said, let's waive the fee on those individuals that do want to come out.
I knew we waived the fee, but I was just wondering, how many large scale map amendments can we do a year, Don? Uh, is that even an option to do that? For.
I believe it's up to eighty acres, um, and, and short of the statute, which requires the process that we have to go through right now, the county has facilitated and waived the fee, and made it as.
Okay.
Convenient as the county can, short of doing a large scale map amendment, so we're well under that threshold, but, um.
That's days of that, it's going to be a lot of time involved and pretty busy expense on a large scale map amendment.
Okay, well, just, we'll just stick with the small and, and address them as they come up.
Yes, sir, if you go to a large scale, and, uh, that's over ten acres, and when you do a large scale, you're, you open up for, uh, state review. And, uh, really, there's no limitation how many you can do, it's just how many you can endure.
Okay. Fine, I'm good, but we'll just address them as they come up.
I have a question for the attorney. Mr. Attorney, I second the motion for discussion, but our own property falls in this, now where, can I discuss any of this, or, or vote on this, or do I need to abstain?
Uh, the, the.
This isn't your property.
This doesn't affect you.
Oh, it's not mine, but I have property that's under this umbrella.
The county has previously adopted the policies that are stated in the whereas clause. Um, this particular ordinance doesn't affect you, and doesn't have a benefit or a burden to you one way or another, so I would say you can comment and participate in the vote.
I just want that clear. No, we wanted to leave this, because, let me, let me comment right here, then we'll, we'll go. The, uh, under conservation, you can't do anything, uh, land I own probably will remain in conservation, but the Board of County Commissioners, not only given me, but all these other landowners, I don't know who all of them are, talking if they do want to come out and develop and put something, they can. And that was the whole purpose of it, as, as, uh, you stated, it should have never been put in there in, in it, but it just, when the state came through, they just bundled it all, which they were at fault for doing that. We've come back and tried to shed some light on it and get it in the proper, in the correct way. That's all.
Now, um, my concern is with the fee waiver, and, and I've watched this process with this particular parcel, and we've had the advertisements that are required by law, um, the PDRB has sat and discussed it yesterday, um, we are discussing it today, staff has had to prepare for this. So there is a cost to the county every time we do one of these small scale amendments, but we are waiving the fee. And, and this time when we're talking about fees, user fees, um, and that we are trying to bring in revenue, I have a little problem with a full fee waiver ongoing, um, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with waiving the fee.
And I, I understand, I mean, if the things are tight, but this is something that I think the county made the mistake on, and we're trying to correct the mistake, that's why I was hoping we could do a large scale and do them all at one time, that are, they were planted before nineteen ninety, and we'd be done with it. However, you know, I mean, it wasn't the owner's fault that they were put in conservation, they probably weren't, I don't read the paper every day and, and, and see what's, and, and certainly didn't about the Comp Plan, all the process that went through the Comp Plan. Um, I do think one positive to this is we get out of, get it out of conservation into residential, then it's going to go on the tax roll. It's going to, it's, there, there's going to be a benefit down the road to pay for what we're having to do to, to get this to the point, but it's going to go on the tax roll and, and, on the tax roll now to, to be paid after one. So I think that's a point, that it'll help us.
We had a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
I had a second. Got a motion by Mr. Yeager, got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Got one opposed motion, uh, we got a motion by Mr. Yeager, second by Mr. Mike Daniels, got one opposed, do we have anything from the audience? Do we have anything from the audience? There's nothing from the audience, so we got, uh, motion carries three to one.
Mr. Chairman, the, um, next item on your agenda that you have in front of you is the public hearing as regards to PDRB recommendations. Page seventy-five of your, your agenda has the, um, noticed, the public notice for yesterday's meeting before the planning board. Um, amongst those, you've already addressed number two at your last meeting, um, so that was moved off the agenda. Uh, number three was just dealt with by you all with the adoption, adoption of the ordinance. Number four on the agenda was with regards to a variance approval, uh, for Mr. Douglas Cooksey on Saint Joe Beach. In front of each of you, you have a memorandum from the county planner, um, with a detailed description of the discussion and the, the ultimate recommendation of the planning board yesterday. I'll read it for the record. Um, the variance appeal from Douglas and Barbara Cooksey for parcel ID zero three eight nine eight zero zero two, yarn subdivision, Saint Joe Beach, located in section five, township seven, south, range eleven west, Gulf County, Florida, vote setback encroachment to add a screen porch. Uh, the memorandum reads as follows, after much discussion and deliberation with the applicant and their attorney, the PDRB approved by a three to one vote to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners the applicant's appeal proposal to allow the encroachment variance to remain by one, removal of the previous encroaching fence from the right-of-way, two, improved parking into the lot, and three, move the steps to the side that will keep the structure three feet from the property line. I believe in addition to that, the building department was in attendance and required that the additional permits be pulled, uh, by the applicant. And I believe, uh, Mr. Magis, the attorney for Mr. Cooksey's here as well today, on behalf of the applicant. Um, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, for public comment.
Do we have anything from our, our public comment? Do we have any public comments?
Recommendation to approve? As, whatever the recommendation was.
A second.
I got a second by Ms. Bryant, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing from the planning board yesterday afternoon, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, you have your monthly report for November in front of you, a few quick items. Um, October bed tax revenue reported a twelve percent decrease, um, which is actually not happy news for me and all of us. Um, I've reached out to, uh, Ms. Jenkins in the tax collector's office, I've spoken with Mr. Novak, surveyed bed tax collectors and my counsel, and we found that there, um, some variances on reporting bed tax numbers, some collectors, uh, report quarterly and some report monthly, um, which, if you're reporting quarterly and you're a big collector, then those revenues are reported in, in months that aren't accurate to when they were collected. So we'll be working with Mr. Novak and Ms. Jenkins and try to make sure that, that the larger firms specifically are, um, reporting monthly, and really the quarterly will be for those smaller VRBOs with one or two homes. Is that correct?
It is, um, right now, we're reviewing statute as well as, uh, coming up with the policy or ordinance for the county going into two thousand fourteen. Um, in summary, it's roughly going to be on an annual basis, if they generate less than a thousand dollars on annual bed tax, then they'll have the ability to, uh, report on a quarterly basis. As Ms. Jenkins indicated, the larger firms in the, in the county that report, uh, to keep the numbers accurate and keep the TDC strategy in line with what they're budgeting, is going to be required monthly. Um, we're going to go through the Department of Avenue and come back to you all the recommendation in January for that policy.
We use those numbers for, for budgeting, for strategy, for everything that we do, and if they're skewed, it's difficult. Last October, two thousand twelve, we were up forty percent, and this year, we're down twelve percent, so.
We're getting faults.
Right, oh, numbers.
Numbers here.
Not accurate, skewed.
Skewed, skewed, so we'll be working to, to remedy that.
Might be better.
Two more quick things, we will be having our annual celebrate twice, um, celebration on New Year's Eve in conjunction with Mexico Beach. We'll continue to have shuttle service, um, back and forth from all through the night, uh, to ensure safety, and this year, we're going to be hosting, uh, a Gulf County Bar War, so some of our local pubs and restaurants will be competing to make a signature drink, so we'll be marketing that, and I just want to let you all know, because we don't have another commission meeting before, um, New Year's Eve, to be sure to come and celebrate twice. And finally, um, I'm asking for permission to go out for RFP for beach cleaning, um, the contract has ended, we've had a, a subcommittee meeting on beach cleaning and grooming, and a council meeting, and I'd like to ask permission to go out for RFP to contract the company.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager. Second by Ms. Bryant.
Just to elaborate on that, too, there's, uh, certain areas that we can't clean unless we get permission, and Cape Sandblasts is one of them, which it's, you know, it's fifty-fifty, if some people want it cleaned on a regular basis, some people want that rack line to stay there for the, you know, for the birds, mostly, uh, and to build dune structures. But at the end of the day, there's going to be sections that are not going to be cleaned on a regular basis unless it gets to be a, a safety hazard and all that, and that'll be in the RFP process, but that's just for general information for the public.
And there will also be places where the, the grass is spread out, and other places where they'll be left in piles, depending on, um, the dunes and, and where, and we will go out and survey that, um, before we start the contract with the new company.
Got a motion by Ms., Ms. Yeager, I got a second by Ms. Bryant, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We discussed earlier the, um, consent agenda and information packet, um, in the approval process of that. Um, as you are probably aware, my office has a email list that we send these out, um, following their, um, development. I just want to let the commissioners know and the public know that on January, you know, one is starting in two thousand fourteen, we're no longer, we're no longer long to maintain that, um, mail-out list, it's already available on the county's website. Um, it's become very voluminous, um, sometimes people cannot, uh, they don't have the ability to accept a large volume, so, uh, it's already there on your website, so I just want to let you know and the public know that we'll discontinue that mail-out list. Um, we will send a couple between now and then, let people know about it.
Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of items. Um, bid number thirteen fourteen dash zero three for the stump hole revetment, um, we had five bids, and the engineer's, uh, recommendation, so with the low bid, would be PAC Comm Incorporated in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars, and that's the recommendation for, for approval.
Then where are they out of? What does it say? Because I don't have the bid tabulation sheet.
Um, Miami.
Miami, okay, though, I know there was a couple of local contractors, they obviously must not have been within the.
Yeah, the, the next lowest bid is, uh, over two hundred thousand more.
Wow, okay, well, I hope they understand what they're getting into, because that's a complex project, but at any rate, so moved for the low bid, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? Do I have anyone from the audience? Have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
The next item, um, I want to make a recommendation, I made one, I believe, in, uh, two thousand twelve. Um, we, we have got a lot of retirees coming shortly, uh, within the next few years, but, um, Dawn and I spoke this morning about possibly coming up with a policy or some type of procedure to use for retiree dinners. Um, we have recently had one, and we, I need the board to decide whether they're going to approve that. The last time I made a recommendation was to approve for a year for any retiree dinners, I mean, we have people that have been here twenty-five, thirty years. Um, so if the board doesn't mind, I would like to ask the board to approve the retiree dinners for, uh, two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen, um, just so that we can, uh, show our appreciation for all the years of hard work for our employees, and I do need the board to approve those, or they can't.
I think we need to just make it a standard practice, and people have given thirty years of their life, and I know other counties and cities do the same thing, so we should just make it a standard practice to, when somebody's retiring on their last day, dinner, because it's a minor cost, the way, the way that we do it.
They're, they're usually under a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah. Uh, would you like it just a blanket? Yeah, instead of just approving thirteen fourteen, just say a blanket retirement dinner? Is that?
Hey, we're about through in thirteen, not having any more or not.
I don't think, we don't have any of them as it is, but.
I'd be happy to review, um, with Lynn and the staff, just to verify on the statute, but I'd say do it any retiree, but not to exceed a certain sum, so that way staff has an ability to go ahead and do that on a regular basis with your policy, if it, for whatever reason, they'd have to come back if it were to exceed a certain sum.
Uh, I mean, I, I think we probably got budgeted money that we use for that.
We, we do, because they, historically, we have done that in the past, and so there is that small amount in there for, for retirees, and if there's not money in that budget, they won't do a, they won't do a dent.
So moved not to exceed three hundred dollars for retiree, and I know it's a benefit for them, and, and it's something I think would be appropriate.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have anything from my audience? Do I have anything from my audience? I got a motion by Mr. Yeager, second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
That's all I have, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I've got a couple of things. Uh, I've got two bids for, uh, ship projects, um, bid number, uh, thirteen fourteen dash zero six on the nunnery project, uh, you've got that in front of you, uh, the low bid there, Raymond Drysback, thirty-one thousand, six hundred, thirty-five dollars, uh, with discussion with the county attorney and, uh, Mr. Butler, I'd like to recommend that, uh, low bid.
Uh, so moved, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
Uh, also another bid, bid number thirteen fourteen dash zero seven, uh, it's on the Colvin Project, and, uh, low bid there in front of you, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars even, uh, uh, like to recommend that as well to you.
One question before we, my, Chris and the Pies, are they local?
They are, uh, Moses Medina.
Okay, good, thank you. So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, second by Mr. Yeager, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries four and no.
I've got one other, uh, item, uh, I've got an invoice here from, uh, Pervert Governmental Insurance Trust, uh, this is for our workers' comp, uh, audit, uh, this is done at the end of the year, uh, for our two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, uh, we usually don't get this invoice, uh, until toward the end of the year, after the audit is complete. Uh, it's in the amount of three thousand, five hundred, thirty-seven dollars even, uh, we had a new hire or two, and that's the reason for the increase there, so, uh.
This is one from Pidget, the one I sit on the trust for.
So you'll, you'll need to.
I'll abstain from that, Mr. Chair.
All right, so moved.
Got a motion by Mr., uh, Mr. Mike Daniels.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion passed, three and no, one abstain.
Thank you, that's it. Hey, Brett, while you're up there, we had mentioned it here, I don't know, a couple of months ago, about kind of gearing out some files and, on. of months ago about kind of gearing out some files on some of our files. We getting close to getting a policy on that that we had mentioned before?
On the old ship.
Yes, the old ones that...
I think probably by the, by the end of the year, wouldn't you say we'd have a, Mr. Attorney, a policy or a blanket document probably to cover those individuals that fall within that ten-year timeframe in the purchase assistance.
I think, can you just clear the record? I think, has the commission approved the policy? We're just going to do a template form now to enable the administrative staff to do that. If they exceed the ten years, which was your policy, and they're still on the books for purchase assistance, I believe in October, or it was November, that they approved the policy. So we'll do the template form and have that on the county's website so they can fill it out and submit it.
And we may do something where, I've discussed it, too, with Carl Odell at the clerk's office. She handles a portion of ship over there as well. Maybe having that blanket document over there, too.
That way, somebody can come in with that.
Come in and figure it out.
All right. Thanks, Brett.
Yep.
This is Joe. We have Christmas coming up. I'd like to find out if it'd be okay to feed the guys.
Always do.
Okay. All right. No problem? All right. Thanks.
Mr. David.
Yes, sir. Just for point information for the board and the public. Last information I got concerning bigger waters NFIP Reform Act, our congressmen are fighting very hard to get this delayed or even possibly repeal the change because we're Florida having about thirty-seven percent of the policies. The impact's going to be very serious to Florida. In fact, it actually, not a round of foreclosures. But the last word I got, they're meeting a lot of resistance and not getting much support. So just for the public's information, that the congressional delegation is fighting hard, they're just, I think they're just going against the stat deck.
Just for the public's information, they probably don't know what bigger waters is, but it's about the flood insurance, and it's going up substantially. You know, this is talked about in FAC and small county colleges. Some people's policies in Florida are going up from three thousand dollars a year up to forty. And these are on properties that are two hundred thousand and, or less, you know. So they, obviously, they've got to somehow maintain their flood insurance, or they're going, or the mortgage company's going to write it for them. So it's a definite problem and an impact to Florida especially. And one thing that I noted was that Florida's a dollar state to this. You know, we're not the problem in flood insurance. We donated sixteen and a half billion dollars since the inception of this program with flood insurance, federal flood insurance, and we haven't collected but three and a half billion. So as far as I'm concerned, they need to go look somewhere else. State of Florida has contributed their amount, and what we, it looks like to me, what we need to do is make it a program in the state of Florida, and us take that if we're going to be the dollar state. But it is the congressman, it's a hotly contested issue, and I think at the end of the day, what these Florida legislative, the delegation from Florida is going to have to convince the rest of the country that we need to delay this thing. So...
It's interesting that you said that amount because the, I think, the deficit for the NFIP is twenty-four billion. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have two items. The first one is with regards to legacy trust program you all conditionally approved at the last meeting. It was the life insurance program that was proposed to the county. After our meeting, you gave the conditional approval for staff to review it and come back with the recommendations. We had a meeting with the city attorneys for Weahichka and Port St. Joe, as well as the agents of record for the city, and conferenced in the college financial group for a meeting with county staff. Following that meeting, we were waiting on the Office of Insurance Regulation to get us a response to the inquiry I'd sent on behalf of the county, and also requested a response for the cities as well. Yesterday, I spoke with Eric Johnson, inquiring as to the status of that. He had indicated Andrew Marcus, who is the owner of the council representatives for the Office of Insurance Regulation, will be sending the county a response to our inquiry. I understand late yesterday afternoon, you had called the office. I was out at a doctor's appointment, I have not had a chance to talk to him. I will circulate the response once I get that from the state to the cities, as well as provide it to the county, and then ultimately come back with the final recommendation to staff on that program, once I've had an opportunity to review the Office of Insurance Regulation's response.
Jeremy, we don't have another meeting until, into January. Is there any way we can give you that audio? Based on, based on what's your review? I mean, that's what we were depending on, was your review.
Yeah. My understanding from the vote the last time, it was a conditional approval upon staff review of that program. So if we come back, we'll circulate that correspondence to the commission. I believe the vote the last time was to give us the authority to do that.
You got that, okay.
With that, and confirmed in writing, we'll implement, if it's the staff's recommendation with your approval, we're going to go back and implement that program and open that enrollment to the staff. I do understand the program, it partners with the other municipalities. So the total number for this program is also, I don't want to say it's contingent, but it includes the cities as well as the school board in that program. So the county is one part of that final decision.
Right. With the understanding.
What's school board? My understanding, they're, they're, Paul, if...
My understanding, they've already voted to...
I know the city Weahichka, I saw, they were, so we're in...
So Fort St. Joe's already giving them all their numbers, and so they're good.
And I'll follow up with Mr. Scholes and...
We're still waiting on the insurance commission to give us the...
Apparently, they've issued it or they're issuing it, and then once I have it, I'm going to circulate it to the other attorneys for the cities as well.
Right.
The only other thing was, I wanted to follow up. Greg Hogan of the Rialto Group and Mr. Paul Penn were very cooperative and worked with our county staff, and I wanted to thank Lee and Mark and Joe. They got that sign down in Veterans Park last week, and I want to thank this property owners for their cooperation in getting that done, as well as Mr. Pickles of Duke Energy. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
While you're on that, I also want to thank all of the staff for working so hard on getting that sign taken down. It was quite a project. I know from the legal side of it to the actual physical removing of the sign. So I've had a lot of calls from the public that are happy that the eyesore is gone. So thank you.
It looks better.
I was just commenting on that. I was out there this morning about seven-thirty this time, and Mr. Danford and Mr. Lewis and Public Works, thank you. It's truly an asset to that community for it to be gone. I know there's a lot of bureaucracy in it, and a lot of people want it gone like yesterday, but you have to go through the steps and the procedures. But it's history now, so we'll move forward. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair. The county commissioners, we spoke the last time, a couple meetings ago, about possibility of adopting MSTUs or MSBs for repaid and garbage, beach nourishment, and stormwater. If the board so desires, we need to pass away the list of prior to January the first. As a possibility, you can take another step and do it before March the first, if the property president, tax collector agree, but clearly, we'd get something done by January the first. If the board wants us to work something up, we do have a public hearing next Tuesday on seventeenth at nine o'clock here in this room. If you don't have a resolution ready so you can go forward with MSTU, if you're so choose after January, we have one ready for you for those garbage and beach nourishment and stormwater and paving. And you can pick one of those, or none of those, or all of those. But in addressing for the board, we have to have a public, a special meeting next Tuesday along with a public hearing, and a vote on it.
Yeah.
I think we should draft it, and we can always, I don't want to, after the fact, let's go ahead and have it in hand, and then if we want to...
If we sell a special meeting next Tuesday, turn around with a public hearing, and...
We've got a meeting at, let's see, seven-thirty at nine...
We've got a public hearing at nine o'clock to do enterprise zone.
Nine o'clock, okay.
Do you have enough time to advertise for seventeen?
Public hearing, they call it a special meeting, and in terms of the resolution, I don't, the adopter will circulate that, but that'll be introduced to you at the meeting. But it is sufficient time to, it was a normal course.
So that topic does not have to be part of the notice?
No. The enterprise zone enterprise ninety day, and that was advertised, I think, back in September.
Oh, yes. The, yeah, the enterprise zone, that's ninety, but ninety's on there. But this meeting for the MSTU or possibly MSBU adoption or resolution passage, that's a special meeting.
I think it fits in with looking at alternative sources of revenue, and I'm in support of that as long as we do the reduction in the ad valorem sides. You know, I don't want it to be an added source of revenue. What I want it to do is give the, you know, the taxpayer a break from other taxes, and let's spread that around. And MSBU, MSTU, everybody pays, and that's, you know, the fair, fair split.
Okay.
Let me make a comment on that if I could, just to shed some light. I see quite a few taxpayers out here, and I'm one of those, and you are, too. But about a month ago, I had a young man sitting in my home, and we were discussing issues of the county. He made a simple, I don't know if you want to call it remark, anyway, and it's a lot of truth to it. And this young gentleman said, there's, everybody wants to drink the wine, there's only a few squeezing the grapes, and those few are the taxpayers. And I thought that was very appropriate, and I thanked him for it, and a lot of truth in those words there. Which time, some of the ones that's drinking the wine help mash the grapes, and this will be one way to do it.
What time did we say that was, now?
We didn't. I don't have it. Automated.
I would say, we probably need no more than thirty minutes for the enterprise zone meeting. So I'd say nine-thirty for the special.
Nine-thirty, okay.
If I can, Commissioner, to the point before about the notice of meeting, the resolution and adoption by this commission will lay out the steps that are going to be taken. I don't want the public, it's the first formal action by this commission. There are several other steps by statute that'll have to follow. It just needs to be adopted a resolution prior to December thirty-first, so there'll be plenty more opportunity in public hearing on it.
Mr. Chair. First item. We do next Tuesday, seventeenth, nine o'clock, a year on Eastern Time, in this room, a public hearing for enterprise zone map, we're in three square miles to your nineteen point nine each quarter mile map. We've had several meetings, I think we had four meetings now, public care advertised meetings of the enterprise zone. Scott is working here, he's working there, we speak on maps. We have application ready, it's an extensive application that we've got to submit to the governor's office, but it's under the to be in order. We've got everything almost there. We'll have that ready for you next Tuesday, so. And also, even as late as that public hearing next Tuesday, if we modify that map, we're still modify it. I think we probably got it where it's going to be, but we need to modify it again if we can. We got to transmit it out to the state before the first day of January. So we will send it early on the eighteenth.
Don, I know Scott's been covered up with that project, is, as far as the Cobra lines, is he getting close to that, that we can send that?
Scott is working Cobra. Hopefully, he'll be returning to the enterprise zone today. He's already been working on Cobra here, the official Cobra maps, he's got those in his hands now. He's actually doing two things now. He's taking the nineteen ninety-one areas and determining the acreage of Upland, or acreage of fast land in P-30, which is the unit we were talking about in Cape Sand Glass. And also, he's taking today's map and determining the acreage. And knowing technology today is a lot better than what it was in nineteen ninety-one. When they did it, they really didn't have too good a technology, and they, we think it's sort of just that acreage, but we're trying to figure out what it is. But it's been worked on, and we should have it soon. I know time is a race. D.C. needs it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Next item, over the weekend, late last week, and over the weekend, yesterday, I received requests from one of the port commissioners for some assistance for grant application and grant administration, and from one, and particular commissioner would like us to go do some work and help the Port Authority out. But the Port Authority stands on its own legs. I would, I think we probably need to take some angle on it to look at what they need.
I've had a discussion, too, with one of the port commissioners, and I think what we need to do is ask Don if he would, if he's got the time to attend their, I think they have a port meeting tomorrow. I can't be there, but if you could attend and get a little bit more description of what the full board wants from the county, because I've told them that I would support, individually, I would support us helping them with that grant administration. I just don't know how in-depth they want us to get with that. I know they're asking St. Joe Company to do some things for them, asking us to do some things for them, but we do have staff that could help, but our staff is full, too. So I think that this board needs to know how much help that the full port board wants. So if we could ask Don to attend that meeting, I think that'd be good.
Well, and I also think that whatever it is that they're looking for needs to be invited and by the Port Authority Board and not just one commissioner, so that we can look at what it is they're requesting prior to making...
Agree. That's why I think Don needs to go and see what the full board is asking for.
Okay. I will attend tomorrow, brother.
Thanks, Don.
That's all I have, chairman.
Mr. Chairman. I'm playing. I apologize for interrupting. Just something for the board's knowledge, I just learned about this week, and it could have serious impacts on the county. I don't know if FAC and small counties where it is, but under the Affordable Healthcare Act, it is now quite possible that volunteer firefighters are going to be lumped in there as employees, and it could have serious impact nationwide. So just for your information and what might be coming, that's all.
Mr. Butler, can you give us, is there any update on America's Ditch and your work with the engineer?
I met with Ralph Reese on Wednesday after our last board meeting. We were closed down on Wednesday, but I went in, met Ralph an hour, discussed the ditch. We left that meeting with his agreeing to work on a plan of action and to get back with us. Talked to him yesterday afternoon late. He didn't know for sure if he'd have that plan to meet by eight-thirty this morning, and we didn't. So I think this will come, I think within a day or two, we should have the engineer's recommendation on what he thinks should be done on America's Ditch. But yes, I met Lynn twice on it, and it's the first time we've managed to after the last meeting.
Thank you. And the only other thing that I have is, of course, the NERDA projects, and I know, Commissioner Jaeger, that you attended the meeting. I, of course, have to mention it, you know, we were very blessed to have four good projects come to the county, and three of them are in District Three. So District Three is very fortunate. And that is the Highland View Boat Ramp will be revised to be a safer and more pleasing place to use. And also, the Beacon Hill Park will have improvements, and a proposed fishing pier in Windmark Beach. And I think Commissioner Jaeger also received the Indian Pass Boat Ramp, and if you want to talk about the meeting a little bit?
Yeah, the meeting went great. I mean, it was finally, all of us, all of us worried and were concerned about the NERDA money flowing because it's designed for early restoration. That means as quickly after the disaster, they get these monies out. But when they ask all the counties for their projects, for DEP to consider NERDA projects and get approval from BP, we all didn't know how much money was going to be there. You know, it ranged, like, we sent in a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars worth of project in Gulf County alone. So for DEP to go through all those projects and try to work with BP and see what would be best going forward, it took a long process, but it's been two or three years since we've been working on that process. Staff's done good. I know that our grant administrator's not here. She worked with DEP personally on those and got some even adjusted. I think originally, we had a pier that we asked for in front of Veterans Park, and also three hundred dollars, three hundred thousand dollars for an overhaul. While they didn't approve that, they did, she, a grant administrator negotiated with them and got that five hundred and something thousand for Veterans Park for improvement. So, you know, whatever, however you're going to go through that, through committee or the staff or whatever, I think you could fund an amphitheater, you can really make it nice out there with that much money. But I want to commend DEP for going through that many projects, getting all those projects. They're all in Gulf County, doesn't matter.
And I'll also mention that this city also received funds for their boat ramp, so that...
Eight hundred and six thousand dollars, and I was just talking to the mayor, they're going to have to figure out what all they want to do with that, but I think one of the things they want to do was to extend the ramp so you can have more room for boats parking, for boats anchoring there. So, you know, I think it's a great win. It's really, if you count the city project, it's right at three million dollars worth of projects that Gulf County is going to receive, and that's a good start. That's, for the public's knowledge, that's not, that's not any of the money coming from Restore. There's already a billion dollars in Restore from one of those so we're going to be getting those monies as we're still working on the regulations, federal regulations.
It's on the treasury.
Treasury, yes. But it's a great start, so it's going to be some good projects. And I think that some of those projects will probably start in design after June. I think according to BP Secretary Herschel Vineyard, it may take them until June to finalize with BP all those monies. But they're going to be flowing and they're good projects. Mr. Yeager? The only thing I had left and I just, I guess I want to refer this to staff. I had a request from Nick Vaca with the South Cuff County Volunteer Fire Department. He's trying to help out the Humane Society. And basically what he's sent me here is the Humane Society has been donating an eight-by-ten portable building and the building is sitting on private property in Juniper Avenue. They've got a local towing company that's going to donate a flatbed truck and do all that to get it there but they're needing maybe a few good men for an hour or so to try to get it turned to where that local towing company can get that thing on there. It sits on private property but it's going to the Humane Society. But I told him that I couldn't approve that until I got with staff and got with the attorney and asked, you know, is there something that we can do to help these folks out to get that thing moved to the Humane Society, they're giving it to the Humane Society.
I'm sure we can do it with this liability. We're going private property every day to the harbors and other places. But with a released liability, we can go in and get it.
Okay, Don, I'll just leave this with you and it's got Nick's information on it and I'll write his phone number on there and we'll go from there.
Commissioner, if you would, if you just make a motion for him to make an agreement. I have him sign it but we need to have a vote of the commission.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, four and no.
Okay, my honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One item, public knows we relocated out of the old courthouse up in Weewahichka the office of the clerk, the office of the tax collector over into the old health department. And that where they're located, we need to look into this with our staff and I have to work with the city Weewahichka because there's a water line there, it's got to be moved. But we don't have any parking there, we don't have a handicap and I think for a handicap it probably takes at least seventeen to maybe twenty feet and wet. We're going to have to look at putting some parking in there to pave out where it look good because those people will be there for, I guess, for the duration of that building. So I just wanted to bring that up and we'll get with staff right after the holidays in the city Weewahichka and we can go to work on that. But we've got, we need at least four to maybe find more parking spots up there. We don't have any. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have anything for my public? Yes, sir. Can you come all the way up to the...
Ms. Brad's not here.
Bill, if you want to, come to the front.
Come on, give the clerk your name.
I'm Bill Davis, chief of the fire department. On behalf of the members in the community, I was hoping Brad was here and I wouldn't make...
He's sitting right back there.
I didn't know he was here. But I was wanting to find out to make sure what the design on the budget bought for from the last year, what the design is.
You got money you want to bring forward from last year?
Absolutely. There's been a little misunderstanding on somebody's part but anyhow, we got approximately nine thousand dollars or a little over that we was needing to bring forward in our budget. And I tried to get the exact amount but I couldn't obtain it this morning.
Typically, we have cash carry forward. If it's not reserved by a fire department for a specific purpose, it goes into the pool to help all fire departments. I'm not sure of your area but we will be glad to look at it and see. Typically, it's too late at this point. If we find there was additional cash carry forward that we did not anticipate, there's certainly a process that you can go through, public hearings, process and all that to do that. But if it was judged it out to other departments, then you got to take it away from them to give it...
We'll try to find you some money.
But we can look at it and see.
Well, the purpose of it is we in the process of trying to, you know, roll money over as much as we can to purchase us a well-needed truck because our newest truck is over ten years old now. And that's the reason why we were trying to cheer forward, you know, all the budget we have. And I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any one else from notice? The chair has nothing today and can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Merry Christmas, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.